Good evening, everyone. How's everybody doing tonight? Can you guys hear me through the speaker okay? I'm not very stoic. You can hear me in the back? Can you hear me? Well, thanks for coming tonight. We wanted to call a town hall meeting for the Elver Creek Water Company. It's great to see the turnout here. We tried to schedule this at a later time at the advice of some of our advisory board and some of the commentary we got the last time we did this, last August. So really what we wanted to do was give you an update on where we are today, what has been accomplished in the last six, almost seven months since we last held this forum, and kind of set the stage for what's going to occur moving forward. We did get a number of questions that were submitted prior to the meeting, and so we'll try to sort of lead through some of the topic here and respond to some of those questions at the same time. But certainly if there's anything else that comes up and you want to bring up a question in front of the group, that's part of this forum as well. This is a two-way communication, again, trying to improve our communication with you with regards to the Elver Creek Water Company. Questions on that so far? One of the key initiatives that we talked about last year and that the customer base themselves suggested was the formation of an advisory board. So we did in November, we wrote the advisory board charter and we solicited representation from all of the major homeowner groups that make up our customer base. And so we did form that meeting, or excuse me, we formed that group. We were able to have our first meeting that took place, I want to say about a month ago now at this point. So I did want to introduce the members of the advisory board. The only one that was willing to sit up here with me, so he'll get first, that's Bill Leb. And Bill Leb represents the Estates Homeowners comprised of Crescent Ridge, Pine Ridge, and High Point, correct?
Correct.
All right.
I represent the fewest members, so I could sit up here.
So also in the audience, we've got Jeff Beckel with Rockwood Estates. We have Charles Deal with the Village at Rockwood. We're Mr. Mark Epstein representing the Glacier homeowners. And then Jerry Koutou representing the Taco homeowners was not able to make tonight's meeting. Did I miss anything? And then, did I hear something? I'm sorry. And then just for pomp and circumstance, my name is Jim Goodman, for those of you that we haven't met. I'm the chief operating officer for Glacier Entities on behalf of Rick Carlton and kind of the standing-in leader for Elver Creek Water Company as we look to stabilize the operation. With me up here to my right is Sandy Greco, our chief financial officer for Glacier Entities. And then Dave Harris, our general counsel. And then I have Anna Crona, who helped me out with the right...
Elver Creek Gadman.
Elver Creek Gadman in this capacity. And then Sean Young, who is our plant manager. Sean's the one day-to-day in the plant managing process, producing and watering and treating the waste. I think everybody in the room knows, we engaged in a metering project not too long ago that resulted in the metering of nearly all of our units on the system. I say nearly all because there are still eight units remaining. We have a plan in place to get those eight units metered, and so we're pursuing that this spring. I don't want to waste time on those details, but we are chasing those down, looking to get that resolved here this spring. With the metered usage data, we took that, we gave it to our consultant group out of Denver, Colorado, BBC Research and Consulting. I think a number of you have maybe seen the initial report from 2019 that was on, that is on today on the website available to you. So that's the basis of the rate study that formed the 2019 rates that were ruled out April 1st, 2019. As part of that advisory board process, we shared the return product that we got from BBC Research and Consulting, and our advisory board found some issues with it. We noted a couple of discrepancies. A few of the constituent groups questioned the methodology with which the expenses were being applied across the different customer groups. And so it resulted in us causing pause for a second. I told you in the announcement that we were going to release that study here in advance of this meeting, and I have not done so. So I wanted to fall on the sword and admit that we were unable to release that because of what the advisory board uncovered. And so we felt it was important to heed the advisory board's advice, go back to the consultants, revisit the study, adjust this based on that feedback, and that's where we are today in the process. In real time, I expect to get something by the end of this week from this group out of Denver. And as soon as we get that and get it to the advisory board again for their review and comment, then we will distribute that out to the customer base via the website and through the email notification and so on. But I did want to still have this meeting today so that we can bring you up to speed on the developments and where we are in the process and give everyone another opportunity that you might have not had in August to ask us questions about the water system and where this is taking us. A couple of items that were identified by the advisory board in our meeting was the topic of debt service. And so with the topic of debt service, the idea was could we get more attractive terms? And so I haven't had a chance to necessarily update the advisory board specifically, but the group as a whole here. I've spoken with some traditional financing arms, some bank facilities. This debt would not fall into a typical municipal financing scenario. For those of you that are keen on the financial markets, we're not going to get the same kind of rate that the city of Durango got on their water and sewer debt. It's a different class of debt. The banks want three years of audited financials for the water company, which hasn't been in existence for three years. That itself presents a challenge for us. I also spoke to some private equity lending sources, and those sources said, you know, given the scenario here, they were not able to offer us better terms than what's currently in place. They would be looking for a higher rate of return than what we're currently financed at. So, you know, right now those two avenues have not proven successful, but we believe that we budgeted this year for audited financials. Going forward each year, we will have audited financials. And so within the next two years, we should have a better case for ourselves to secure outside financing or better terms. Concurrently, we've also talked with our current debt holder about changing those terms, and those talks are encouraging, but I can't today sit here and tell you, yes, it's this rate at this term at this year and at this yield and so forth. So I'm not prepared to do that today, yes?
How much debt are we talking about?
Just a minute. The current debt was 4.325 million, which is related to the... Wait, make sure I get this right. 4.325 million, which is related to the new water plant upgrade, water system pumps, water meters, et cetera. The... When we got together here last time in August, we also talked about the fact that there was an additional $2.6 million sitting on the Elver Creek Water Company books that has not been accounted for. That debt has not gone away. That debt is still there on those books. And so what we're trying to look at is different financing options where we can account for all of this debt into our rate scenario. So if you take the 4.3 and the 2.6, you're at 7.7. That's irrespective of future improvements that need to be made.
Is that kind of a change from what we talked about before, Dean?
Yes, in simplest terms, yes, it is a change. It's not forgiven debt, and that's what I wanted to make sure I correct the record. If I did indeed misspoke the last time, I'll take ownership of the error. It is not forgiven debt. It is still debt that is on the books of Elver Creek. It would need to be resolved at some point in time, whether it's now through debt financing or at some point in the future. It didn't disappear. Bill?
He also...
So what's contemplated this year is between 7.50 and a million for the wastewater treatment plant. That would be the design and logistics phase, and then there's potentially another 1.5 to 1.7 next year for the actual reconstruction and renovation, is that the right word? Or modernization upgrade of the facility?
Is that, I think it's always been spent, or is it projected?
That's projected.
So it shouldn't go on rate, is that anything to spend? It's not a debt?
Correct. But it is contemplated to be serviced through the rate schedule. Yeah.
So basically, we're talking 10 million dollars.
Yeah, 7.7, and if you include 2.5, then yeah, you're up.
Who do we owe the $2.6 million dollars to? Would you say it's a debt on our books?
It's to the developer.
Oh, so that would be the...
It's capital that the developer put into the water system to improve, right? To improve the water supply system.
So can we have a rate on that? Is there a... Do we owe that awesome interest on it, or is it just 6%?
Yes, 6%. And that's, again, while we're trying to speak to other capital sources to see if there's opportunities to get better terms for the water company. Another item that came up through the advisory board meeting was the topic of transmission loss. And we have a number that's somewhere in the neighborhood of a 50% transmission loss between the water that is produced out of the plant, assuming that we can rely on the meters, and Sean and our engineers believe that we can. And then the water that comes out of the meters that are accounted for and resulting in revenue, there's a large gap there. It's also a big discrepancy between the 2019 study and the 2020 study. We thought we had around numbers 50 million, 38 million gallons to produce revenue, when in turn we had much less, half of that. And so towards that end, Sean and myself, our outside engineers, were working to identify sources of those transmission losses. And we do have 40-plus-year-old ductile iron in the ground, which we suspect is problematic. We know we've had some breaks down at Pod Cone, Gamber Oak. We experienced a large break this summer back in the Glacier Club area where a manufacturer's tee failed. So we're continuing to slim out leaks through sonic means where we listen for transmission loss, and then we're looking at outside experts that can come in and do things like cameras and other techniques that can help us, again, try to identify and segment off areas of the system to find where we're losing. Obviously, if we improve that, we're going to improve our cost structure, and that's going to result in better rates. Questions on that?
Can you come back to debt service for one second?
Yeah.
So in the projected numbers that BBC put together, does the debt service requirement include the 2.7 that was reported? Or is it 6%? Is 6% just the...
What are you referring to? Are you referring to a previous set of numbers? What do you...
The previous number, the... Hang on, Steve. The PowerPoint that we reviewed in February had a debt service number on it. It was like $480,000 a year.
Right, that debt service did not include that $2.66 million in the balance.
So we have to put that in as well?
That's what we have acknowledged with the consultants and said, we'd like to see this represented in the model so we have a clear picture. Now, there's been some talk of trying to adjust the interest rate such that the total debt service amount doesn't change, even though the principal may change. But again, I can't report to you today to say, yes, here are the terms, here's the amount, here's the principal. Yes?
You said transmission losses, so we're talking about lost and unaccounted for. So it could be unaccounted for the measurement, and it could just be lost through the leakage, right? Could it be one of those or both?
Well, again, we have what we think is a reliable meter of what goes out of the plant. And then we have what we believe are very reliable meters on every outlet in the system except for eight residences, and were unaccounted for roughly half of the water that went out of the plant. So it didn't make it to a meter that turned a till and resulted in revenue for the company.
So you're talking about millions of gallons of water that sneak out somewhere?
That's right.
25 million.
About 20, yeah. Somewhere in the neighborhood of 25, 24 million.
We can't find 25 million gallons of treated water?
If it's coming out of the ground at about 20 gallons per minute, that could look like snow melt right now. It could be very small. It could be on a piece of property we don't normally see. It could quite frankly look normal to us. So that's why we've gone out there with listeners and already hit the ground running, listening to certain spots that might look irregular. Dan Noonan, I talked to him, one possibility was the ductile iron run between Rockwood down there. I do listen. If somebody says something, you see a stream that you didn't see a few years ago, let me know so we can investigate. That's about as good as we can do. With hiring outside services, you can use correlators and go valve to valve. One problem here is I only have about 12 valves on property, so that makes it very difficult to go through long runs. So we are actively looking for it. 25 million gallons is a lot. We're talking over a lengthy amount of time, which makes the leak a little bit smaller and harder.
Is that over a month or...
It was pretty much a year. And to properly do a water balance audit like that, there's other factors, flushing from hydrants, constructions, things like that. It's probably pretty minimal. It's not going to shrink that, it's not going to be the silver bullet we're looking for, but every little bit helps. And so as we can apply these numbers that we have not had historically, we'll be able to kind of shrink that number down, and that'll kind of tell us how bad this leak that we suspect, or it could possibly be a series of smaller leaks that are adding up to this number that, again, are difficult to see. So we need a little bit more data to close down that transmission loss. Don't think it's quite exactly 50%, probably a little bit smaller, but as we apply more data, we'll be able to figure that out.
So what's the outlook of funding the transmission loss and upgrading the water plant? Because you only talked about the sewer plant. So we're up to 10 million, and we haven't fixed the water plant, and we haven't fixed the transmission?
The water plant has been fixed. What we're talking about future expenditure is the wastewater treatment facility?
And transmission.
Right, so the transmission loss, you're right, that's an unknown bogey at this point.
Is there a plan to set meters to the entrance of each development? I know we have a PRD valve at the end of this, Starwood Development, could you put a meter in there? I mean, is there any plans of doing anything like that?
Well, what we're looking at with Sean, and he mentioned that typically you would valve off, cordon off areas of your system, and then you would run spot checks against those areas because of the way our systems design were deficient in some of those valves in those zones. We're looking at the opportunity, can we install additional valves to create additional pressure zones that we could isolate these leaks? You know, this past summer, we had a leak that showed itself in between the car path, between 3 Green and 4 Tee on Mountain, and we wound up tracing that and finding it, it was all the way up by Glacier Pond. So I don't know, what is that, 1,500 yards away from the actual leak? It manifested itself, you know, quarter mile away through the rock and out somewhere else. So I'd love to be able to tell you, yeah, I can find every leak, but I think there's probably hundreds of them.
And by the way, that leak was told to me by people who have been here a while that, oh, that's just a spring. So, you know, things can be very deceptive.
Bill?
You were talking about the Gulf, is the water plant domestic water line coming out of the plant, including in the tenant as far as the raw water plant in the sense of there's no interconnections or nothing, it may be pre, before the plant? What I'm getting at is if we find a leak on the raw water side, does that have anything to do with the domestic water?
No, those are separate.
They're separate.
Yeah, and so the 44 million that we had proof of was the domestic water only, not raw water. Because raw was no over 50 million, right?
Yeah, but we're not losing 50 million of raw.
No, that was the total.
I'll give you one second, back here, sir.
Yeah, I apologize to the rest of the group because we've only been here a year. So I'm kind of in the dark here. I hear you tell me we have a water company that's existed for a short period of time, and that's why you don't have audited statements yet. Can you give us, for those new like me, a very brief history of how we got to this point of a new water company that has old lines that are losing all this water and we're all paying for it?
I'll do my best here. So this development originally started in about 1974. Stan Wadsworth developed the Tamaron Resort, 373 condos, Gary?
79.
379, I beg your pardon. And with that, he developed some of the infrastructure, which included the water and sewer plant. That facility was sold to Starwood Capital, and then Starwood Capital sold it to Rick Carlton, who's the current owner today. So the water and sewer plant dates back to, I believe, someone from Rockwood, correct me if I'm wrong, 1974, something like that? So a lot of that original infrastructure to Rockwood, Rockwood Estates, Farview, and Tamaron dates back to that time. The Cartons bought the project in 2001. They set about developing additional real estate within the holdings, the thousand acres. It was actually 80 at the time. They developed the additional infrastructure that goes back into the Glacier Club as well as the golf amenities, the clubhouse, and so forth.
What does that have to do with Rockwood and the people here from all over the area?
Well, because the development that was originally created had a water service, sewer service agreements with those surrounding homes, Rockwood, Farview, Tamaron, and then the to-be-created Glacier, et cetera. So that all relates to the development agreement that allowed for the homes that are there now. Right, what am I missing here?
What happened to create this scene, because this may be terrible misinformation, but when we bought about a year ago, I was under the impression that water was a flat rate of $99 a month, and then we got our first bill and it was $1100.
So water was a flat rate for, what, 2001, 2004 until 2000...
1989 to 2018?
89 to 2018, water was a flat rate. The developer was charging a flat rate and operated the water company as one arm or department of the overall entity.
Can you take us into the formation of Elver Creek Water? Because I think that's where you're questioning why we...
It's like it was a new company about a year ago.
Correct, so...
How that happened?
So Glacier Properties Associates, which is one of the Glacier companies, among other things, all the water and wastewater assets were in Glacier Property Associates, and it ran the water and wastewater treatment plants and the entire operation. Just from a liability perspective, the utility should always be in its own legal entity, and it shouldn't be co-mingling, you know, real estate sales with water agreements and everything else. So we thought it would be a best practice to create Elver Creek Water Company that its sole holding was the water rights, the water assets such as the water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, water storage tanks, the infrastructure, the water mains, the sewer collection pipes, all that would then rest in one legal entity, and that was its sole focus, to stand alone and be a true utility. So that's why Elver Creek Water Company was created at the end of 2017 and really has become operational since then, as those assets were transferred over to it. Does that make sense?
I think the big question that you're leaving out is why was, didn't something go wrong and we needed all this new equipment and that in conjunction with the Elver Creek? Because why would the rate suddenly, oh my God, it's going to be this huge amount, you know, from the $90? It was $90 all the way up until May of 2019. Our first bill is April. So what caused that? I mean, I realize you wanted to separate the entity, but what caused...
I think it was a combination of things. It was a combination of some preferred maintenance that have created some of these capital needs. But I think it was also a case of the rate structure was not, the rate structure was not appropriate given the cost structure. And so that's what we've tried to do, is isolate this company, isolate all expenses and costs and revenues related to it so that we can get this thing to what is a sustainable utility company for the customer groups here. So I'm not sure what else you're working for.
No, it's just hard for the new people, and then you came midstream, and ultimately, yeah, we cut off easy. We weren't paying enough for water. Those communities in a lot of areas, you're paying the $400 on the water bill. But now what we're dealing with is all the old stuff. We've got old pipes, we've got, you know, people who put in landscaping, that would have put in the landscaping, we've got people who've got native landscaping and they're not paying as much. Then you have the problem with the estates up there. So it's just, it is a mess, you know? And we hope we can fix it and smooth it out with the delivery and how everything occurred is why there's been so much confusion, so much negativity. And we do want to be positive, to stand behind you and get it fixed. And yes, we do need to pay more than $90, but the $1,000 water bills are brutal.
Yeah, I agree with you. It is, it's messy. We are trying to fix it. I don't have a dog in this race. I'm trying to get to a sustainable mathematical equation. You've got operational expenses, you've got debt on the facility, and then we're going to have future needs. And even beyond this rebuild of wastewater, you know, we need to be talking and planning today for 25 years from now when this facility needs another facelift. And I think one of the advisory board members made a point that said, hey, a dollar saved today with compounding interest that we need in the future is a lot cheaper than a dollar in the future at 6% interest debt service. I mean, I know there's a few financial guys in the group here. So we're trying to lead this, so one second, we're trying to lead this to a rate structure that is going to cover the costs, cover the debt, provide for sustainable future operating operations of your utility.
I just wanted to thank you.
And conservation, yes, sir.
I just wanted to thank you for taking the time for doing that. That's, that helped a lot.
Well, thank you. No, I appreciate that. Um, I'm not right here first, please.
Okay. Uh, all of our neighborhoods have been paying in, like you said, from eighty-nine. Y'all have had a flat rate, and rates have changed a little bit, but we've always had a flat rate. But we, but incurred a ten million dollar total debt, but didn't someone receive income from all that money that's been paid on a steady rate all this time?
There's been no repayment.
Yeah, I mean, there was, there was income that covered operational expenses, but there was no capital fund, and as a matter of fact, operational shortfalls were frequently covered by the developer. So there's no net profit, if you will, on that eighty-four...
I was wondering, the debt itself, so the ten million dollar debt has been incurred since you started the system? I just wondered where the debt actually came from? Cause somebody was getting that money from all of us for all this time. Do you follow me?
I'm not sure I understand your question. You're asking where the debt came from?
Yeah, we've been paying, what I'm saying is, the funds y'all received all this time, obviously you're saying, actually you had a ten million dollar shortfall. Is that correct?
That, that's, yeah, because the, the money coming from, um, the, the water utility, which wasn't a separate company at the time, that was used to cover operational expenses. So what we're seeing with the debt is actual, um, like the...
Capital improvements.
Capital, the plant expansion, those type things, and the developer has covered that, and there hasn't been any debt service to those loans up to this point.
Interest has just been accruing.
Uh, Charleston, you want to add?
My comment was, would it be true to say that basically the developer or the real estate, whatever has been basically subsidized in the water company?
Yeah, that's a hundred percent accurate.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Yeah, those, those flat rates that were well below market rate were at the expense and subsidy that the developer had to provide.
Did you allow for a reserve?
One of, one of the problems that I encountered when I first bought my property in ninety-six, up on one of the ridges, looked at the water structure, um, and the guy in the random plant, Phil Croker, at that time, um, I looked into stuff because I was in charge of water and sewer development back in Illinois, Jack Nicholas Development. And one of the things that I noticed that there was no money put into any reserve at all. And I suggested at that time that every person that was using this water be charged twenty dollars a month, flat fee that would go into a sinking debenture fund. It would cover infrastructure needs and repairs and so on and so forth as we went forward. And I was told, no, they're not gonna do that. This was back with Stan Wadsworth and their group, and so on and so forth. So I keep saying the complaint is from back in, when I moved in, in, in July of two thousand, I didn't contribute a dime to any reserve money going in. And it's been twenty years that the operation has its needs for correction, for errors, uh, in the buildings, for errors with, uh, just water loss and so on and so forth. And we've never paid for that. So all of a sudden, it's coming to us now. And that's, that's one thing, you notice in the, the, the plans and the finances, they finally got reserves set up that are gonna start taking care of this. And, and you're right, this is, we're paying for something that we should have been paying for a long, long time ago.
Uh, yeah, Mark and then Bill.
So part of the problem is, so just correct us gentlemen, we're not, we don't have a ten million dollar debt today.
No, we don't.
And we have, hang on, we have, we have two point seven, which was carried over from the previous investment, plus the four point two for the construction of the new water plant, which happened in the last couple of years, plus a projected two point something for the new sewer, uh, sewer plant.
Correct.
So the total will be ten million dollars. Um, part of the problem, Jim, I think, is like one of the, the city was saying, it was rolled out horribly. And, and to your credit, you're the one who's come in and started to fix this. So thank you for doing that and organizing the board, and at least having some channels of communication, which we never had. So you're trying to fix it, and I, I, I very much appreciate it. But part of it goes back to our contracts that we signed when we bought our property that says, your rate will be eighty-six dollars and thirty-five cents, and it won't be raised unreasonably. So people who were paying, in my case, ninety-three dollars for water and sewer, all of a sudden got a seven hundred dollar water bill. They had no idea why. So the problem's in the communication, where in fact, if we were really trying to collect costs, we should have been paying a lot more for the service we're getting. We live in an arid climate, there is not a lot of water, and it's hard to treat this water, cause it's coming out of a really hard system. So I think what's going on is, we needed to fix it. If you want to live here, you gotta pay, if you want to have water. And what I think what's happening, the only, the only issue that I have is, again, with the debt service, but to be, to be resolved. And, um, to run a plant, it costs what it costs. And I don't think that, you know, no one's making money on the operation of our sewer plant and our water. I think that's what's really important to communicate, is no one is profiting from the operation of our plant.
No, no one is profiting from the operation. As a matter of fact, uh...
Subsidized.
It's, it's subsidized, and, and I want to say the, uh, you could quote the Cascade ruling, and, and they've ruled that, you know, an operator can't make a reasonable profit on his operation. So, um, we're not even there yet. We're, we're just trying to get this thing balanced and, and on its own to where it's gonna self-sustain with the rate structure. And again, we've, so thank you for acknowledging that, Mark. You know, we've committed to these kinds of town halls, we've committed to the advisory board, we're taking their, uh, advice seriously. Um, we're working with our outside consultants, but, uh, um, it's not gonna get fixed overnight. We're gonna revisit these rates again, uh, probably again next year, and then at some point, we feel we're stabilized, we'll start to revisit these every couple of years or so. There is an expense to the company, uh, to, to engage these outside consultants as well. Uh, I'm sorry, Bill, right here?
Uh, two questions. First of all, I remember being in a similar situation in the Sierras in California, and there was some method of getting the feds to assist, uh, federal government. Has, has anybody injected into that situation, number one? And number two, exactly how many feet, yards, miles of, of lines do we have? Does anybody have computed that?
How many mile lines do we have?
We do have that. I, I could get you that answer tomorrow. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I did, uh, we do have that, as well as how much water is out in those lines, what size lines they are, uh, what they're made out of, that those type of...
Doesn't, doesn't include the watering of the golf, does not include the watering of the golf course.
No, that's separate.
Separate system. As far as the federal involvement, I'm not sure really what that would look like, or what form that would take. Uh, I mean, I'm all ears, but right now, we're a privately owned asset, um, so I'm not really sure where, where that would put us. Uh, Bill, sorry?
Uh, back to the debt, I just, what Mark said, because it's, what is coming out is you're gonna have almost half the cost of the new rate structure to the debt. And in the original consultant report we got last year, we had, uh, showed that we spent three and a half million dollars on the plan, upgraded the plant. We understand that, uh, but there was no mention of the two point seven previous to two thousand and eighteen. And then it seemed like that three point five went to four point three, man. And, and also, it seemed like all the meters we put in, we're paying for, we're, we paying for metering ourselves, basically, as consumers. So my question is, is there any way we can get a third, uh, third party audit of this, and it would make us feel more comfortable where the money's going? Where did that vent?
So a third party audit of the debt, is that what you're asking?
Of the capital. What went to meters? How much did we spend on meters?
Uh, according to my records, five hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars in water meters.
And what went from, why did it go from three and a half to four three? That's been, you spent that, what, seven hundred thousand dollars since August of last year?
I wasn't involved in that project, Bill, but the animus water intake, I think, was eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars.
The consulting company, consultants didn't pick it up last year? Cause it wasn't in their report last year. They went three and a half...
Yeah, I think we, I think we had some scope and some cost creep that went from three point five to four point three. As a matter of fact, in the current, uh, water and sewer assessment, I have a, a three point two number, but that includes a twenty percent contingency in there. And so we're using the seven fifty and the, uh, one point eight to get us to about the two point five five. It could be as much as three.
And the other, the other thing is operating costs. Operating costs was half a million dollars for ten years, and now it's six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. And that's a thirty-eight percent increase. Hopefully, we won't see that every year. But is that, is that, what is that cost by? I mean, the additional operating costs.
Let me talk about that change from variable offense.
Hold on, one thing at a time here, first of all.
I mean, that's what, that's what caused that operating, because a lot of it was fixed. The total.
We went five hundred thousand, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars in operating costs.
I don't have that line on a budget in front of me, Bill, but I'd be happy to meet with you offline and go through it, line by line, if you'd like.
The point was, it's not, it's, it's maybe about a number, since the numbers changed so much that we, you know, we just need something that kind of gives us comfort in what we're talking about. Are we talking about a thirty percent increase in operating costs every year? That's what we had from nineteen, two thousand nineteen or twenty.
So operating costs in twenty twenty are projected to be four hundred and seventy-four thousand. That's not including labor, though.
No. See, maybe, I'm going by the, the number for the power.
That's it. What's that?
This, this...
Yeah, not everyone here has that, so I'm not sure, do you, you want to dive down in there? Is that what you'd like?
It's just in the numbers, that's why rates are going up.
This is why...
Yeah, I mean, it, look, it, yes, it's all adding up to causing the rates to go up. Operating expenses, again, one small component, as is debt service, as is capital reserve, the future reserves. Yes, sir?
Does, does the developer own the Elder Creek Water Company? Which belongs to them?
Yes, the dev, it's a, it's owned by, um, I mean, I don't know, the ownership, it's Westcroft, but, uh, yes, in, in simple terms, it's owned by the developer.
And, and who owned the water company for the preceding twenty, twenty-five years?
The developer.
Okay. So during that twenty, twenty-five years, the developer chose to operate the company basically at a loss, paying for excess...
Correct.
And, and it marketed this place for twenty, twenty-five years with ninety dollar a month water bill, which is a significant marketing advantage to the developer. And now he creates another company and says the new company owes the old company two point seven million dollars because of that subsidy?
Yes.
And we're being charged for it?
Yes.
Yes, yep.
The sub, you, 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 your, your facts are not correct. The two point six, six, seven million is not a subsidy, it's a capital infusion, capital dollars. So when a company needs money, they have to go get capital. So where are they gonna get it? In this case, they got it from the developer, but it's still a capital infusion. It was not an operational subsidy. It was a capital, uh, requirement for equipment and systems.
Well, so what happened to the, I'm getting the impression, though, that the ninety dollars a month never paid for the full operating expenses at the end of it?
There's no account for that.
It did not.
Oh, that money's just gone, okay, so that doesn't matter. So the two point seven is the original capital improvement for, that the first company built a water facility?
I, I didn't catch the question.
Two point seven million. Why, why does Elder Creek Water Company, all prior entities, two point seven million dollars?
Well, first of all, it, the, the asset simply went from one, uh, developer-controlled entity into another developer-controlled entity. So the, uh, the debt follows it. The debt is on the balance sheet of the water asset itself, so that was transferred into the standalone entity company. So the debt doesn't just disappear. And that was used on, uh, water rights, animus pipeline, uh, easement, and then some, and then some land value. That's what makes up that two point six, six.
Was any of that debt paid back during the first twenty-five years?
Uh, no, I think we already answered that. That debt, there was no debt service made.
So that's my point. The developer used, had the benefit of marketing this place to all the people who bought, with a ninety dollar a month rate, which is a significant marketing feature, seems to be, uh, to get this whole place going.
I'm not sure I see it that way.
We're being...
Yes.
Uh, yes, I'm, uh, my name is Kim Sprower, and I'm a Tamron owner. And I'm here because I realized that, uh, our representative from the advisory board would not be able to come, nor any of our board members. And I thought it was important for someone from Tamron to come and speak to some of these issues. And, uh, you've already answered, uh, I had two questions, and it appears you've already answered both of them, so thank you for that. One is who owns the company, and, and you said the developers, so that's Rick Carlton, correct?
Correct.
And so just Rick Carlton, no one else? He's the sole owner of the company?
I'm not sure you answered, legally, I don't know what the entity and what the structure is, but...
I'm not sure either. Is there something?
Rick Carlton.
All right, okay, well, that answers that question. And the other one was if you planned to make a profit in twenty twenty, and you said no. Okay, so here's, let me tell you now what my concerns are. And this is based upon my reading of the final report dated February twelfth, uh, that was presented to the advisory board. And not only did I read the whole report and do my best to digest everything in it, I also did some of my own research regarding how water rates are set in other communities, including the city of Albuquerque, where I live, and, uh, some of the communities that were used as a basis for comparison on the final page of the report. Now, I realize that the rates shown in that report are not gonna be going into effect in May, and I appreciate that, that you're gonna revisit this. But I am concerned about, uh, certain assumptions behind the methodology that you're using to determine the water rates for your various user types.
So we did revisit that, and that study is no longer relevant, so I'm happy to entertain you and hear your questions, but, but we have...
Let me...
...did this based on specific feedback from Jerry and from Taco.
But let me just finish, I, I promise I won't take too much of your time. My understanding is that BBC made two sets of general recommendations for setting water rates. First, that they be adequate and stable, so that you could, uh, the revenues would equal expenses, and, including debt recovery and reserves, and would remain stable over, from one year to the next. Second, apparently, they recommended that the rates be set in such a way that they would be both equitable and encourage conservation. And by equitable, that's collecting res, revenue from all system users in proportion to the costs that they impose on the system. Now, there could be other ways of saying what, uh, equitability is, but that was their recommendation. So I did my own analysis of the proposed rate structure from that standpoint, and, uh...
A proposed rate structure which was not distributed publicly and is not in play.
Okay, but, but it's all I had to go on. So that's what I went on, and I'm glad, like I said, that, that's, uh, not what you're gonna do, but I, I think...
I just want to point out, if you're going to make pointed or damning conclusions about your research, it, it's a moot point.
Well, here, here's the thing, and I, I just want to point out what was being proposed at that time, which is, first of all, uh, and I have all the figures here that show, uh, basically how it would break down by, uh, user type, and all my, I have calculations, everything is taken from that report, which was just two weeks ago. And what I did was I calculated the cost of production per gallon for the company, including the debt recovery, all of those costs, three point two cents per gallon, that's the total cost. Administrative, you name it, that's all part of that, and that's very clear, it's very easy to figure that out. We can also figure out the cost of the treatment plant, three cents per gallon. That's also very easy to calculate. That's also very easy to calculate from page nine. It's very clear. You just do the math. So what I did was I went through and I calculated, based on these categories, how much each kind of owner would be paying per gallon, okay? So in relation to the cost of production. And what I discovered is Taco owners will be paying 10 cents per gallon, which is actually 6.8 cents per gallon more than it costs the company to produce. And what I also discovered is every other category is getting a discount. And actually, the multifamily, it's only 0.1%. Single family, 0.6%. 6, 0.6 cents per gallon. The biggest discount is for irrigation, which is used by both Glacier Club and Taco, 1.6 cents, 50% reduction in cost. It's the same water. It's the same water that we all drink is being used for irrigation by both Glacier Club and Taco. I don't know if there's anyone else that's doing that, but it's just, it's, so that's one thing I would like to point out. The same is true for the wastewater. Let me just point that out. It's 5.9 cents for Taco owners, 2 cents for single family, 1.2 cents for multifamily. That's because of this fixed cost thing, right? And I understand why you did it, because you want stability. That's my understanding. You felt stability was really important, so it was better to have a fixed rate. I happen to think that you could have accomplished all of those goals without sacrificing equitability. But the most important point I want to make has to do with conservation. And what they suggested is that actually, for the sake of conservation, the best thing is, number one, to have metering, so that we all get feedback. We see, oh, wait a minute, I'm using this much water. Whoa, I better cut back. And that's what, how it works in Albuquerque. I get my water bill. It shows exactly what, how many gallons I use compared to average. In fact, I've used that to find out we have a leak in our sprinkler system, called right away, got that solved. So that's clearly a very good practice for conservation, okay? The other thing is volume-based rates are best, because then you get rewarded for conserving. Now, I am very sympathetic to all these folks out here that suddenly get these huge bills. Believe me, I would have been having a cow myself. And of course, part of the problem is, you know, we have these suddenly new costs here, so that's part of the problem. But I still, I think this is such a huge issue, and I think somehow, something needs to be done to address this particular issue. One thing, like I said, I think it would be really great if you would provide this, okay? Something like this. This is what we get in Albuquerque. And by the way, our fixed cost there is only like 10 to, about 15% of the total bill is the base rate, okay? So this is, for us at Taco, 95% of our bill is the base, is the base rate.
Could you please describe what is on the page that you want us to provide?
Here are the months. This is the average, and this was our use. So you can see, all of a sudden, in November, it shot way up, and we knew we had a problem, and we took.
Such a monthly usage relative.
Yes, and that will really help. Everybody, I think, would appreciate that. The other thing I want to show, I think this is super important for everybody to see. This is something I downloaded just a year and a half ago, okay? This is a drought map of the United States, and it shows that we, this was at the tail end of the drought, by the way. This is us. We're right there at the bull's eye, okay? This is going to be a problem, a big problem. And I really think this needs to be part of your plan, and I feel like charging, the way you're charging, and you went backwards from a volume-based charge to something that's more fixed, and I feel like that's, that's a big problem.
We have, in fact, not done that. That was a proposal, which you analyzed, which is no longer relevant.
I'm really glad, I am very glad to hear that, because, like I said, I think it's.
And that was based on feedback from our advisory board. We weren't ready to release what you saw in that study. It wasn't acceptable to the multiple classes. We have revisited it, and our advisory board momentarily should receive new data.
Okay, I just want to make one more point, and then I'll let somebody else speak. And that is, at Taco, we are very different from other communities. We are more like an apartment house or a hotel. We have very small units, 500, 600 square feet on average, and we use very little water. And by the way, there is a mistake in there. It's actually 660 gallons average per owner, per unit, okay? So the thing is, we're being compared to multifamily. We aren't anything like a multifamily unit. And the fact is, we only have one meter per 10 units. And yet, we're being charged at the base rate for, for each one of those users' units gets charged the entire base rate. That's not how it's done in most communities. In Albuquerque, I called them up, and I said, how do you do it with apartment buildings? It's one base rate per meter, one base rate per meter. We have 38 meters at Taco, but we're going to be charged 379 base rates, because that's how many owners there are. That is, that's why this is so out of proportion, why we're paying 10 cents versus these much lower rates. And like I said, I'm very sympathetic to all of you people in Albuquerque. We've handled this. We have big problems with water. Our aquifer was dropping, and so they really paid attention to conservation. And now we have ziriscaping. Everybody is encouraged and rewarding, rewarded for doing this. This should be common practice here, too. We, this is going to come back. Two years ago, I remember hiking up Golden Creek Trail and noticing there was no water in Golden Creek. It was dry as a bone, and I thought, my God, what is going on here? It was that drought. And it's going to come back, and it's going to get worse.
Your point is well taken. I appreciate you speaking out. Thank you.
And if anybody's interested, I have other copies of this if they want to. If anyone wants to check my math, so.
That study was not to be circulated. It was not complete. It was not signed off on. I will talk to the advisory board about how we need to work as a group together, so that we don't have this sort of bad information get out. Where were we? Jim?
Jim, I got a couple quick ones. One for Sean, engineer to engineer, but you say there was ductile line of pipe under here, you had a lot of it?
The Taco area and the older areas, the Rockwood section, and the State's Village, Barview, those are more the ductile.
So you have a concern about the infrastructure on the old Martin development, not so much across the Inglisian side of there over here. My question really was, Sean, was that originally including a coating pipeline, because it probably protected, is corrosionous, you could have, or something else?
The same, you would see. I saw similar stuff in the city when I was there. It's just all ductile things happen. You have lead packing they used to use sometime spring, small leak. If we have areas over by Gamble Oak and Pinecone in particular, the ground is pretty saturated over there already with that water, that groundwater, that it's got a lot of minerals in it, will kind of take its toll on the outside of the pipe as well, as well as all the heating and everything else. So it's an area of concern, just like anywhere else, I think.
I'll talk to you after the meeting about maybe some trace of gas or some of the other technologies that are out there.
I think Grace will do that.
Yeah, anyone in the audience that has any particular areas of expertise that we think would be helpful, love to talk with you.
And Jim, another question for you. You said this guy about $540,000 replacing or adding meters. I had to pay for my own meters, as opposed to, like, newer homeowners have had to pay for those. So it sounds like I'm now subsidizing everybody else's meter.
I'm not sure I can answer that. I can tell you, I have a line item in a code here that says water meters. What can you tell me about that?
Meters are supposed to include in the tap fee, and the builder is supposed to get those meters initially.
So she said meters are included in the tap fee, and the builders are supposed to get those meters from Sean or Anna, the larger company.
And that's clearly communicated by me to the builder.
Well, I understand, so it's just one meter. The $540,000 was to put meters for everybody else, right?
Yeah, on existing, on existing homes, yes.
Yeah, ones that didn't have meters. There were homes that did have meters.
So did they, if a homeowner did not have a meter before, did the homeowner pay for their own meter? No, so I'm paying.
The water company elected to install those meters.
That's right. Well, I bought my meter through my tap fees. The other people had their meter installed, that is not part of their tap fees. So we had to buy our own meters, we're subsidizing now through these rates other people's meters.
Sure, okay.
Okay, yeah. I just wanted to point that out. I don't feel quite fair, but.
Those Taco owners, a deal.
Yes, sir.
Could you, or Sean, speak, a while ago, you got the letter that said there was the water quality excursions, and could you speak to how that's going to address, and what's the outlook for this spring runoff season, or are we going to be in good shape?
Yes, well, I'll try to address the high level and then turn it over for some technical talk. But you're talking about the water quality. We had notices of two violations that were incurred in the system. One was a total organic carbons, and one was a TTHM, and I can't even begin to say the right.
Total trihalomethanes. It's a disinfection byproduct.
So it's a byproduct that when you treat water and you treat organic carbon with disinfectants, chlorine specifically, it gives off a byproduct. And the state has determined thresholds for those measurements in the water samples, and the threshold is computed on an annual average, is that right, or quarterly average?
There's, there are two different formulas. The TTHMs are a running annual average, and the TOCs are.
Nobody likes the fight.
Yeah. The TTHMs are a running average, where we go by each quarter and then drop a third or fourth previous quarter. I don't know off the top of my head right now. And basically, if you want to get into it with the TTHMs, you say current quarter times two, plus the previous quarter, plus another previous quarter, divided by four. So it gets a little bit tricky. And we had, we had a, one result that was 128 on our TTHMs, and that kind of put us , that was a rule for the rest of the year. That has come down. The TOC average is down as well. It's a different formula where you take raw TOC and finished TOC, and alkalinity is also in the equation as well, and there's a calculator for that on the CDTHM website that we can just punch in our numbers. The state also does it and then sends us the notification. Recently, I have kind of centralized all that information. Everything's about spreadsheets and data, so if we don't have it, we make a spreadsheet for it and we start recording it. I wasn't happy with the way the TOC and TTHM information was, was getting to me, so I went ahead and kind of took the bull by the horns and created this spreadsheet, and now I'm recording everything we get as it comes in. And this first quarter, we're looking good on TTHMs. We're below our 80, our 80.0 threshold, specifically with a 61.025. So we have some good room. We are preparing for spring runoff, and we'll try some things differently this year.
A couple of things he asked about, what are we doing about it? And so the hydrant flushing programs help us to move that water and keep it from, because , correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, the water can sit.
It's potential for problems, so we want to flush them.
So we want to keep the water in the system moving. So the flushing program, we're looking at technology in the water tank, which is a tank stirring system.
Mixer.
Mixer, which has also been shown to, to help with this problem in some other systems as well. So we're, you know, we're addressing it actively. The notices that we sent you were mandated by the state. We're not allowed to change the language in the notices, so do apologize if anyone got a start from those notices, but at no time, the water is compliant with all the federally and state mandated guidelines.
We're back in compliance. We did it quickly, and I'm pretty happy about it, so we're on the right track.
We also.
The excursion, we let us know right away, or this time, we found out like six months later, we were drinking, no, out of spec water?
The difficulty there is it is an annual average, so that's why we started charting it in a different way to try to, you know, on our own to know if there's a spike, and we've certainly tried to be proactive. But again, it's an annual average, and at no time did anything indicate the water was unsafe, there was no issues from the state, said, hey, you need to shut it down. So it was kind of a statistical barrier that we crossed over momentarily.
Those of us that have water softeners, will that change on those numbers? Or would our nets coming out of our costs also look the same as if I didn't have a water softener?
So we have different sampling points. We are not going to sample from an endpoint like that. For TOCs and TTHMs, they are predetermined points that are determined by the state. The TTHM is one that's out in the system, that's representative of the system. The TOC numbers come from the entry point of the distribution system, which is basically where the treatment plant puts, like, the water meeting the treatment plant is where it's sampled. So we don't have to do endpoint users. It might look a little bit different because you have a water softener, but that's not something we sample for. That's an endpoint thing. But your water filter, any filter you might have might take some of the TTHMs out, but it's not going to take it from that. And I think they, most filters are, take other things that we don't test for, or so they say.
Just a little clarification, Sean. So there are carbon filters and resin filters that do take out TOCs and TTHMs. Water softeners, like you're saying, by and large, do not.
They generally don't, because this question came up with the water quality, and if I put a filter on, is it going to help? We did some research on that. It might help with some things, but I'm not going to sit there and say, yes, it's going to.
Yeah, softener will not, and an RO system will not, but some of those other filter systems that you're talking about are specifically designed for TOCs and TTHMs.
Will you recommend us where we can get those, a brand or something?
Yeah, talk to our advisory board member, Mark Epstein. He has that technology. Question right here, now, get to you, Bill.
Yeah, I know you were sent a bunch of questions from all of us. Are you going to go through them, or?
Yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy to get into this.
I didn't know if you were answering.
Yeah, and we are also going to, we have responses to those questions, and we're going to post a FAQ on the website as well after this meeting, so you'll be able to reference the questions and the answers, okay?
I don't need mine. One thing I'd like to point out is Jim was brought in to the utilization to run the club and not the water company. And in the budget, we have a line item to hire a general manager that would take the bullets that he's taken from all of us now. But one thing we have done, and I think it's working pretty well, is the advisory board that he has chosen, and we've put together, we have some pretty good heated meetings and a lot of good, tough questions, as you all know, but, and changed all the data that this lady over there went through. Basically, we sort of threw that out the first time we met and said, some of this doesn't look right, and challenged the consultants. The consultants went back and are starting to redo stuff. But, you know, we're all here trying to resolve the same issue, is to have a water facility and sewage facility that takes care of our needs. And despite the fact that we don't like what some of the rates are going to be, we're paying for the sins of the past. I've been here using water and sewer for over 20 years, and I certainly should have been paying every month something to go into that. And it bothers me that it never got really taken care of until all the situation came together within the last couple of years. So while he's taking the darts right now, he doesn't need to be. It's, the dart should go back to the Wadsworths when they first developed Tamaron and everything else, and gone forward all along, and nobody did anything because they didn't want to upset us, the users. So it's us right now, and we've got to get to where we can, and hopefully with the advisory board steering the group here that owns it, they'll listen to us enough, they have been, it'll all come out. And it's going to be what it's going to be. The cost is, and obviously, if we can save money on, on the interest, maybe we can all form a big group here together and buy it and charge 4% instead of 6%. But it will be what it's going to be.
Be happy to entertain that, by the way.
But just, they've done a good job, and they're trying to. But just, they've done a good job and they're trying to do the best. And we, as an advisory board, are going to be, continue to, to challenge the consultants and anything else that comes up. So we're all watching out for you anyway.
Please, Sean.
I just wanted to remind everybody that one of the challenges this water company has is the, the community that it's serving. So many people are seasonal. So if you think about how, you know, in the winter, how many people are here to take waters on the plant? They've still got to have that.
We still need revenue. We got to.
They got, that's why the fixed, one of the reasons the fixed costs are so high compared to variable costs is because you've got this seasonal situation. It's not like the city of Albuquerque, you know, it's completely different. It's a, it's a kind of a unique utility situation.
Every utility is unique. It's a byproduct. It's, it's customer size and it's cost structure.
So Jim, when you tie that to conservation, I guess that was my question that I had tonight, but I didn't want to throw it out because I hadn't seen the report. But if one conserves, conserves really tightly, not really saving that much money, you know, except for use, there is. So if everybody does conserve, gets back to what you just said, you have to have revenue. So if we all conserve, you don't have the revenue. Everybody's great school.
Well, we use, we use some conservation estimates and, and some industry figures to help drive this, this equation. But you're right. If, if everybody in here all of a sudden cut all their water back to half, we'd have to revisit these numbers again. It's a zero-sum game. That's the deal.
Well, yeah, especially if you have debt and then you have a majority, your operating cost is fixed. Then you're essentially got very low variable costs.
Correct, correct.
You've got to have a fixed cost.
So, so in that reiteration that you saw, there was a, a very, a much higher fixed cost. And there were some things that changed from the consultants. Some of our storage agreement related to our water was in 2019, was allocated as a variable cost, but in reality, it's a fixed cost. So that changed some of the structure and the thinking behind that study you saw. But again, we heard, we heard the advisory board, we've heard Taco, we've heard the conservation message and all these other things. And so, yeah, we're trying to put that all into the equation and bake the cake and come out with this fair and equitable. And here's a methodology that a logical person will, would say, well, yeah, that, that seems logical and fair and so forth. So that's, that's what we're trying to get to. If the group would appease me, I'll, I'll go through a few of these questions that were submitted prior to the meeting. And we've answered a number of them already. Someone asked, why was the town hall meeting scheduled on a date when very few of the members will be in attendance? I think we have a nice turnout here today. But this is related to fiscal planning, right? Last year, the rates rolled out April first. And that created a, a revenue that was budgeted on. This year, we have budgeted the same way. And we're not going to roll those rates out April first. We're not ready yet. As I explained at the beginning, we're working through the advisory board and their feedback and then we'll come back to you. So this is part of the process to engage. It's been seven months since August. And we wanted to follow up with you and tell you where we work. We're not trying to dodge anybody. We'll do another one of these in June when, when more of the summer and seasonal guests have returned. Someone asked about the debt, six percent. I mentioned that already. We've looked at capital markets. We've looked at private equity. There's some challenges there with that debt. We are trying to bring those terms down. Someone asked if we can submit questions after we get the BBC rate study? Absolutely. I'm, I'm trying to engage. I'm trying to give you information. You will be able to submit some questions. But again, there's a limit to the process. There's a reasonableness here. And this is a business that we have to run. So at some point, we got to get the rates set, the methodology agreed upon, and we have to move forward. Someone says they're interested in the rate structure, the method of determination. So again, we're going to share the study and the methodology. Someone mentioned enhancement to the Elbert Creek water invoices, similar to what you suggested. With, please consider adding a table on each invoice that lists the rates we pay based on usage ranges. Adding the table would allow each customer to see how much they're paying based on the volume that they use. So if our billing statements therefore can accommodate these things, we'll look to add those and create a more informative statement. Someone said, I'm surprised I get charged for using auto pay to a checking account and that there's no charge for writing a check. It seems backwards. Our third-party billing agent charges us for each ACH transfer and we pass those charges on to the customer with no markup. It was asked, what communities receive water from Elbert Creek? The village of Rockwood, Rockwood Estates, Rockwood Farview, Taco, Glacier, and then the three estates at Tamron neighborhoods, Crescent Ridge, Pine Ridge, and High Point. Let's see. Current rate schedule was asked about, those rates are published on the Elbert Creek water site. I don't want to dive into that. Proposed rate schedule for these communities. As I mentioned, we're working at finalizing these rates. But I want to be clear that there may be some rate changes between customer classes, like we've seen with multifamily, single family, business accounts, raw water and things like that. But aside from that, it's a level platform. The same rates for, for everyone. There's no variability by neighborhoods. Are all customer water taps metered? We talked about that. There's eight missing. We're going to get on those this spring. Landscaping of two various communities like Club Cottages, Royal, et cetera. Yes, all landscaping is metered to those communities. Was asked, would HOA fees have to go up to cover landscaping, water use and home use? And to the extent that HOA fees are sufficient to cover existing expenses along with the prescribed reserve we've established, it would, would not be necessary to raise those fees. Same thing on the, on the master association, the same answer. Do, do various lots without homes pay the minimum water fees? There's a $750 a year vacant lot fee that has been put into the rate structure. And the answer is, is yes. The lots owned by Glacier do pay that fee. But platted lots, future development areas which are not platted, have a different tax status and we don't pay water and HOA fees and things like that until they are platted and recorded. Did you have a question?
So if you've got an empty lot and there's no water service to it at all, you are still paying opportunity cost?
Yes, there's a system cost to have that system there at the wedding at your lot. The, let's see, if the lot owner, we already answered that. The tap fees, will tap fees for new homes be increased? There, there's no discussion at present that I'm aware of of a, a change or an increase in tap fees. Asking about landscaping for the clubhouse and other common properties, are they metered? The answer is yes. Are these rates for clubhouse and common areas the same for all other customers? Again, there, there would be rate classes, likely a single-family home, multifamily and business account and raw water. Irrigation, I beg your pardon. Irrigation is contemplated at a different rate for irrigation water than household water, correct, for HOAs, for HOAs.
What you call irrigation is raw water?
No, no.
No, see, that's, so, so there are, there are single-family households that, well, we're talking just HOAs, right? We're talking just the HOA irrigation. So now the irrigation that takes place around the HOA common areas is, is treated water. We don't have separate raw lines going to each. And then there's a statute issue with using that water outside public places within some, something like that. Did I answer your question? Will club dues be raised again to cover the increased water cost? That's not under consideration. As a sidebar, I am going to have a, a club town hall meeting probably in about June, where I'm going to unveil a five-year plan for the club and for the development and what we're contemplating and try to give you all some direction on how the dues are going to flow and what the future's going to look like in five years if things all go according to plan. I'm trying to get through these. Are the various homeowners subsidizing the club water costs? Or do all members pay these costs equitably? So GMA pays all water costs related to the clubhouse and so forth. And that's part of the expense load that, that is on the club. I'm not sure if I answered that. Clearly. If not, raise your hand. Can I redo my landscaping, eliminating grass plants and trees in order to minimize my water use? And so my standard answer is, yeah, you can, you can, you can do your landscaping consistent with the landscaping requirements in the architectural design guidelines. Now, there is a section in there on zirscapes and drop tower plants and so forth. But the answer is, yes, you can reduce your landscaping if you want to reduce your water consumption. Will the club enforce landscaping requirements? Yes. Can you rock your yard? Again, within the language, it's in the design review guidelines. And anybody that wants to look at those things with me, I'm happy to sit down and page through them and show you some of the certain areas. If I cut back on my usage and everyone else does as well, will our rates be adjusted? Again, we, we just kind of covered that. Was the water treatment plant overdesigned for our current needs? And I want to be clear on this. No, the water treatment plant was not overdesigned. The upgrade that was made to the water treatment plant brought it compliant with current standards. And the specifics, if I can find it here. So the original water production capacity was 400,000 gallons per day. As we went to upgrade the plant, we use a filtered cassettes technology. And each of these filtered cassettes has a capacity of 166,667 gallons a day. So to get the plant back to its original capacity, we needed three cassettes, which were installed resulted in a daily capacity of 500,000 rather than 333,400. Some of the membrane modules within each of the three cassettes could have been removed to reduce the capacity to exactly 400,000. But it would have only saved us about $15,000 on a $3 million upgrade. And so we made the decision to go ahead and bite the bullet and it resulted in a slightly increased plant capacity. The original plant was designed with adequate daily capacity to handle the demands at full buildout per our development agreement. And again, that's 379 Tamron units. And then there's the number of the Rockwood Estates and all the Rockwood affiliated units. And then the Glaciers Development Agreement, which is 473 density units. That makes up the whole world that the plant was engineered to serve. So the plant was designed to serve buildout capacity, not, not just Tamron. So I answered how much growth was designed in the plant.
If we find all the lakes, we've got plenty.
Well, there's no doubt about that. Thank you. I don't know if you heard it. He said, if we find all the lakes, we have plenty of capacity. I agree. We have plenty of capacity. Will the club be forthcoming with potential buyers into the community about these rates and the expected cost? Absolutely. I, I think I've proven, from sitting up here, I'm transparent. I'm going to share this stuff. The rates are posted on the website. It's public record. The club is not going to hide from anything. You know, someone commented about high water bills. And can I rationalize the expense of belonging to the Glacier community? You know, and a number of this amount is likely related to irrigation. But we've, you know, we've been over that in this meeting so far. The numbers are what they are and, and we're, we're a closed-loop system. We can't add another thousand or 2,000 user accounts to amortize our expenses and so forth over. So the numbers are what they are. Someone asked about a water well that's used to supplement our water supply and where it is. So that well, it's on Glacier property off County Road 200. It's a 47-foot well by permit. The frequency of the use of that well varies quite a bit. In short, because of its low capacities, it's mostly a supplemental source when we have high demand periods of water. Someone asked about the brief overview of what happens to water from intake by Elbert Creek to, to your faucets. And I'm going to try to answer this, but if it, if it opens up the weeds, then I'm going to turn it over to the expert down there. So from intake, the water is mixed with a coagulant and it enters the flocculation basin for flash mixing. Yeah, you can get out of here. And then it, it passes through the settling basin into a membrane filter. And the filtered water is then disinfected with chlorine, pumped out of the building to the water storage tank and into the distribution system. That kind of gives you a path that the water takes. Where's the inlet for Albert, Elbert Creek? It's on the southern end of our property near County Road 200. Is it below Havillan Lake or Electra Lake? Technically speaking, we're downstream from both. The Animus River intake is about a mile east of the property at, at the Animus River. Kind of right across the Rockwood train station to the south and straight out to the river. Is the draining of Havillan Lake causing a concern? Certainly it is. We have water storage there. We have surplus water reserves there. But we have been in contact with XL Energy about their plan. And we're kind of working with them in real time. They have told us they have a, an additional storage basin or an old historical storage basin of some sort. And they feel that they can store sufficient levels of water. So as we get more information, we'll share that with you. How many homes are there? Where the water taps have gotten found? And again, there's eight. Someone asked, what happens to those residents being billed for water and at what rate? And the customers are really being billed a flat fixed monthly charge for water and wastewater. So certainly that's an unequalled situation right there. We're trying to get that solved as soon as possible, locate those taps, excuse me, those lines and get those metered into the system. This is more about the, the un-metered and the billing methodology. And someone has made the statement that if, as long as there's one home that's not metered, then we're not being treated equally. And we're, and, and more, we are paying the same rate. And therefore, no one should pay metered rates until we get every single household metered. I appreciate the perspective. I'm not sure I agree with that point of view. Hearing no commentary. I'm happy to move on.
Well, that was my question. And we have one, the one home in Rockland has a large sheet of lot lawn and they're paying $95 a year.
Do we have an un-metered lot in Rockland? We have one?
Yes, one.
Okay. Well, I, look, I, I hear you.
What I'm saying is that paragraph four of our contract says we all should pay by the same rate. There's eight lots in total. They're not paid by the same rate and methodology. Why are we held to this contract?
Well, they, they, they will be held at the time.
Oh, you are now. They haven't.
The other one I would bring up is that similarly situated residences in all of our communities are being treated the same to the extent they have a meter. They're being treated identically. To the extent they don't have a meter, they're being treated exactly the same way across neighborhood lines. Now, these eight, although they're all being treated the same amongst themselves, we're going to get them. So they're treated like the vast majority of folks in here.
What is the problem that after a year you can't find their line?
There, there are some service lines out there that aren't, that are packed. They're plastic. It might not have tracer wire on them that are hard to locate. There's been a couple of spots where we've come up with blank stub outs where there should be a service line hooked to it and it's not there.
Okay, you can find where it's going into their house.
Correct, more or less.
And, and we've had some homeowners that have been uncooperative in the. And we've had some homeowners that have been uncooperative in the effort as well. To leave it at that. So, Sean, I appreciate your perspective. I don't think that's financially reasonable.
Well, of course, I understand that's not.
Okay.
But the whole point is that the fairness and...
We're doing everything we can. I started the meeting off by mentioning that. And it's one of our highest priorities to address transmission loss and lack of meters. And so we are trying to get that done. Yeah, Kimberly?
The good news is we calculated now a whole year of our water bill. The problem was we had water shock because it came at when the irrigation was going, et cetera. But really, in the winter, we're paying $85.
Right.
And, you know, we've got a sizable lot and house. So I calculated we averaged maybe $250 a month.
Right, right. For a single-family home with irrigation. But the sticker shop wore off once the normalized rates without irrigation started to average, dollar-cost average down a little bit. Any other questions? Shall I continue?
I have a question.
Oh, my. Okay.
I just was going to ask, because I remember last year we had, there's a tape that we have to keep full for the water. Is that, do we still have that agreement that we have to do that? And is that wastewater or is that regular, our regular water we have to do?
I think we're referring to domestic water and that's the water storage tank across the...
Yeah, it's not required that it's full. I would have to check in to see exactly what's been required. But there is a certain amount that is required. I think it's at least half, which we're always pretty much in. We always make sure we meet the needs for required requirements.
Okay. So I didn't know if that had anything to do with when they, you know, said 50% of whatever you can find? Is some of that the water that's going into the tank?
No. Steve?
Jim, first, I want to thank you and Sean for showing me the water and sewer plant. The water plant, actually, I would encourage the advisory committee to take the tour. The water plant looks great. The sewer plant, when it was still here, I tell them, it still looks the same way as it did 30 years ago. And if the government came in, I'm sure it wouldn't be pretty. So when I say "we," the owner of Albert Creek Water Company, has an obligation to bring it up to speed. Sort of where I'm coming from, and it was touched on earlier, we needed to change the rates. The rates were being subsidized, whether from a marketing point of view or whatever. But well, Platte County gave the declarant, and you can blame it on the old developers, but still the declarant, the right and obligation to operate the water plant. Good business judgment means there should have been deferred maintenance all along. So the $10 million worth of liability that we are absorbing really would make the declarant's oversight. It's like the declarant currently recommends that we defer all reserves in the P.O.A. And your five-year plan. I'm a big believer, since it's 20 years done and now we're having to pay the piper, but we are paying it, not the declarant. And the declarant has the obligation and the rights to maintain, own, and operate the water plant using good business judgment. I'm not sure if that was a question.
I'm not sure it was a question either.
Let me get back to, but you said reasonably. I mean, would you agree that deferred maintenance was not properly allocated for the past 20 years? That's a question.
I'm not sure I want to step in that. But look, we can say good business practices. And we can say, look, the owner had the opportunity to establish reserves. The owner had the opportunity to establish some of these other business practices. For one reason or another, it didn't happen. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to talk about what they could have done or should have done. All I can say is here's where we are today. You know the answer, Steve.
I know.
I mean...
We're paying, we're going to pay the price. And the sewer plant is a desperate thing, you know?
Absolutely.
I just have one more question, actually, on a very different topic. Have you thought about the issue, you know, like in California, they've had to ration water because of droughts? Do you have a contingency plan in place for that, for if we're in that situation, which we could very well be in the near future?
We do have an emergency management plan for the property as a whole. And part of that does include water in times of drought. I know that we have some irrigation restrictions that we were putting in place on homeowners and so forth. But beyond that, it's nothing as draconian as like rationing or turning off taps or anything like that. But financial penalties. You're absolutely right, though. Conservation needs to be at our forefront. If you live out here in this environment, you need to know what you're in for. It's not going to get better. Quickly, here, time check at 6:36. We're trying to fit this into two hours. Yeah, Bill?
Just a real question. It actually is for Sandy. Albert Creek, what's the financial year?
It's January through December.
So you do have actual financial numbers?
For 2019?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. My question is, did we reduce the principal a little bit? Because we were paying a rate base that was, had a principal interest in a rate base. Did we pay?
Did we reduce the principal?
Yes, we had a, the, even rate base, they had 3.6 billion debt. And we had built, and it was supposed to be a reserve, and also it reduced the, there was a principal interest.
So because that rate structure was based on 50 million gallons and not the 24 million that was actualized, our revenues were of what was projected. So we did not service the debt through the rate structure as intended because of the so-called revenues.
The billion reserve?
I...
There's a small amount that was able to go up in reserve, but it was very minimal. We more or less covered operating again. And it was, we had anticipated a lot more volume charges than what we actually saw. So that is why the revenue wasn't where we expected it to be.
You want to put those elements of...
We are, yeah.
Yeah. Miss anybody? A few more here. Can you add special meters to our irrigation system, so single-family residents in Rockwood Estates? Yeah, I don't have the ability to separate those lines and add meters to every single-family home. You have one, you have one input. It really would involve getting a separate tap and a separate line to your irrigation system to accomplish that.
Can you calculate that?
Can I calculate?
Back into knowing what our winter needs to do versus summer. And back into what our, we know it's irrigation water versus how you quantify it. So is there a way that you can, or somehow in your tier structure, relook at that? Because we know it's irrigated water.
And then are you saying average it over the course of the year? So you don't have...
Well, we know what our summer uses, you know, and we know what...
Well, you're a single-family home, and in the winter you're using 3,500 gallons a month. And in the summer you're using 23,500. Therefore, 20 is irrigation or their balance.
And then you build up these, your generation or...
I'm going to ask the question of the consultants, but again, I'm trying to, you know, the more that you start doing, the more math, the more averages, the more... I don't know. That seems like a can of worms. You can buy a new tap. We'd be happy to install a new tap on your irrigation line.
No, I'm saying now you have a year's worth of, last year we didn't conserve because we were shocked. We didn't know. So now you have a year's worth, five months where you have irrigation.
I'm not the expert. I can't answer the veracity of that methodology.
But what I'm saying is, there is a line on it. HOA irrigation is right now 673 per...
Per thousand.
Okay, per thousand.
Wow.
But when, in the winter, in the summer months, when you go up to irrigation, that rate doubles and we're paying twice as much for that water. So if you could back out that and we get the 673 for the summer months of our irrigation.
That's why we're in 40.
Yeah.
And I would only say, I totally understand what you're saying. But it's, as Jim said, it's a zero-sum net game, and it's like a balloon. And if you do that and you push in the balloon on this side, it's going to blow out on this side. And somehow we've got to recoup that money. And if you have a flat irrigation rate, you totally lose your conservator. In part, you lose a significant chunk of your conservation.
And you lose that volume metric revenue that goes with it.
But again, that goes back to the contract that I mentioned. Taco pays an HOA irrigation for their common areas. We don't have common areas that are irrigated except for our, or their, our property. So why are they getting a special load for the irrigation that's grass around their condos? And we can't...
Because we're separately metered, right?
Yeah.
Well, of course it is. I'm saying, but you should be able to...
That's part of it. And the other part of it is you're talking about irrigating a private lot of the residents versus...
Versus a common area shared.
Common areas. And they're not really equitable.
I'm happy to bring it up to the consultants and say, hey, does this prove reasonable and make sense? But I think we're barking up a tree.
In terms of, the HOA rate does not have a block progressive, I call it tiered.
The reason for that, they...
Whereas we, as a single family, we have this progressive rate. It is both irrigation, right? So, and, and look, the, if I had seen the numbers right, the HOA irrigation was like 6 million gallons. Is that correct?
I don't have those...
Yes, that's right.
Okay, 6 million gallons over a four-month period. So it's 20 meters. So each one of those meters, they ran 74,000 gallons a month through them in the summer. And we don't get, and see what I'm saying is, they have the large volumes going through those also. Why don't they have a block?
Sure. And let me try to explain that, Bill. So first off, kind of a false premise is those 24 irrigation meters did not run through the exact same amount of gallonage. In fact, it varies dramatically. Taco's irrigation is off the charts compared to Royal Elk's irrigation. I mean, it is like 100 to 1, 200 to 1, Taco's relative to most of the little HOAs in Glacier. So it's impossible to come up with a tiered scale that is going to be equitable to these dramatically different HOAs. And that's why our consultants, because we asked this very question. Because when I first saw that flat rate, it's like, this doesn't seem right. Because single-family homes have the graduated rate. And they're like, this is how it's done with HOAs? Because there's no way to come up with an equitable tiered rate given dramatic different needs of the various sized HOAs?
So if we put a 700 meter in ourselves for our irrigation, it becomes a meter and it would be an HOA flat rate?
Kim?
Guys, I'm happy to take your comments of the consultants. We're not going to solve it here. We're not the math people. We're not the experts. And if we push the bubble in there, then we're going to push the bubble out over here. So your volume metric right might go down to a stabilized level, but I'm going to jack your fixed rate to offset the loss. It's, we're moving piles is what we're doing here.
It's just irrigation, irrigation.
I understand.
So if we can, we'll work it all along. It's treated water. Some people's irrigation is...
But it is treated water. And from my perspective, I don't care what you use it for. Shower, drink it, water your plants. It's treated water that comes out the plant that has a cost.
So why is there... His point is, he's trying to get across to him is that all the irrigation water that Sean provides is not billed the same.
So would you rather see all irrigation billed exactly the same? And we'll make it up in the fixed rate structure? Is that what you're saying?
I think, I think, why not charge 3.2 cents?
More than it does.
Yeah, 3.2 cents. That's what it costs to produce it. 3.2 cents for all irrigation.
Your point's made. I'll bring it up to the consultants. Thank you. Steve?
Jim, has there been any more consideration turning Albert Creek Water Company into a taxic water sewer district? Because there's furbage in the original water sewer agreement with Taco, Hammeron, that it could transfer into a taxic district. And that would reduce our ability to do a bond at a significantly lower rate?
Yeah, that's an opportunity. It is outlined in the documents. I don't have any plans at this point. And nor have I any discussions with the ownership about that course. It is, it is an outcome that could take place. As spelled out in the documents.
You'd have to run an election. And the election would have to be approved by everybody that's going to pay into it. And you'd have to have a majority. Water district, sewer district, fire district, metro district, they're all identical in the state of Colorado with different objectives.
No, we would have to agree to it.
Yeah, the voters.
Significantly paying the seller would have to agree.
You have a service plan. You have a debt structure. It's all starting off. You have a board of directors. You have a budget. It's all audited.
Oversight.
Yeah.
Reserves.
I mean, you already have one. You have a metro district that already pays a significant amount of money for roads.
That, that.
And, but there's specific throughout the district here, and that difference is small.
Correct. Why are we compared to Animus Water in the B.B. study as they're our closest neighbor? B.B.C.-selected regional providers that supply water and wastewater services. Not just like Animus Water Company. And Animus Water Company has a different cost structure since they don't provide the wastewater services. And again, back to your point with Albuquerque, and I've heard Houston and Phoenix. I've gotten a little bit of an education on this. And every utility is different, and it is a subset of its customer base and its cost structure. And it's as simple as that. So Albuquerque might have how many tens of thousands of customers? We have 600 and something right now. We'll max out right around 1,000. So it's very difficult to make those comparisons across systems. But we have asked them to make those comparisons because customer base likes to see those comparisons, even though they have no bearing when their cost structure is radically different than ours. Current water plant capacity? 500,000 gallons a day? Assuming line loss affected... I'm not even sure how to answer that. Water service agreement states that Albert Creek should allocate all costs. No, that's not a question. It appears that Albert Creek wants to charge end-users for excess capacity, which we know will be used by Carlton for Glacier homesite expansion. So again, I did already address this with the capacity of the water plant. While we moved it from 400 to 500, it was economical to do so. And the plant was engineered for full buildout. It was, we're not adding capacity on your backs to support the developer's future development plans. Somebody asked about a salary at start date for a plant general manager. You know, we put that in as a placeholder. We've assumed a mid-year start on that position. That's still a moving target. I heard the water in the golf course uses Animus River water with zero treatment. Is this correct? Or is this water treated in any way? So the water that is used on the golf course is a blend of raw water and reclaimed water. There's no treatment requirement for raw water. And then the reclaimed water we use is held to what's what we call Reg 84 standard. And so we have to submit data to the state of Colorado weekly and monthly to ensure that we're in compliance with our Reg 84 permit for reclaimed. During the advisory board, it was implied that the line loss leakage figure might actually have a significant component that's measurement error. So it might not all be leakage. You know, again, the, we feel pretty good about our meters. We feel good about the technology on the plant going out that's telling us what we're producing. And we feel good about the meters that we've installed. And those meters, depending on the product, have a, what is it, Sean? How many million gallon warranty?
Depends on the size. Most 1-inch meters are a million gallons for five years, whichever you get to first.
So we, so all the meters that have been installed, we still feel good about those. They're at... their accuracy and so forth. Does bring up another point, though. These meters have a lifespan, right? So we've already talked about the meters that have been installed. There's a lifespan ticking on those meters. Eventually, those meters are gonna need to be upgraded and replaced. So obviously, it's a huge importance for us to identify where we're losing transmission loss and how we can bring that into a more normalized situation. Those water utilities, I think, use a number of about ten percent, twelve percent. Transmission loss is kind of an acceptable range, so we're considerably higher.
Is there a goal to go fifteen percent now to ten percent?
Well, yeah, that goal is to certainly get us into line with industry standard, which is ten percent. I don't know that I can answer that yet until I can further assess, you know, what technology can John and Mark help me with? How can we better assess the problem? It's difficult for me to say. You know, I think a reasonable expectation would be within a couple of years, but if all of a sudden we find out that there's, you know, three-hundred-thousand dollars worth of pipe that needs to be replaced or something, there's an unknown. The twenty-twenty expense list includes thirty thousand for legal and accounting. This is so that we can issue audited financial statements for the twenty-twenty calendar year and beyond, again, with the idea of getting us into a more of a compliant fashion so that we could attract outside financing. Someone asked about errors in the BBC consultant's report and so we are correcting those. We've been working with them. You know, one of the errors, for example, was they went to a website and pulled down water rates for a particular water company. Well, then, they didn't call the water company. It turns out the rates that were posted on the website were old rates. They hadn't updated them. So we got bad data through that methodology and I think Jerry or someone else with Taco called the water company, found out that there was different rates. So they're verifying all the rates, calling the utilities, not relying on the websites. But they're also revisiting the calculations to make sure everything's accurate and we're revisiting the methodology as we've discussed so that we can present to you what we think is an equitable fashion to try to divide this pie. At the end of the day, we're trying to divide up, what's the, one-point-three-five-eight million a year is what the system needs. We're trying to figure out how to divide it fairly amongst the user base. So I think I've gotten through all the questions that were submitted to me pre-meeting. I haven't answered something. I'm here. We have seven minutes left in our two-hour window, but I'll stay as long as you want.
Thank you for your time.
I appreciate you saying that. Thank you. Yes, Bill?
Well, I think all we ask is that we look at, consultants look at the rate as to if it's a fixed cost, it's a fixed rate. And if it's a variable, you know, if you have an eighty percent fixed cost because you're having a debt, that should be an eighty percent monthly rate because you won't be able to really sell your debt or try to get somebody to sell a debt unless you have that fixed cost. Because the banker's not gonna want a fifty percent variable cost. So if you have an eighty, twenty, and that's where it looks like it's coming out, then you ought to have eighty percent X and twenty percent variable as far as a rate base. So I just ask that they look at that.
And they are. They, without tipping my hand or telling you what I think it's gonna be, I'm gonna wait till they finish. We'll get it to the advisory board. I think we've found a process that's working for us and we're gonna try to stick to it and this advisory board's a key part of it. Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right, thank you all for attending. Thanks for being so passionate.